So it's, there you go.
Sorry I missed you at the booth?
Yeah, I was there. Yeah, I used to be.
Yeah.
That door makes weird noises.
I know.
I thought we were getting that fixed.
I don't know what is the deal with that. It's like.
I think it's kind of bad. I think it's kind of bad. We used to make noises.
Pop quiz.
Even for like, I had like 15 seconds after you closed it. But it used to stop when I closed it.
So if it's open, it just. It's so annoying that people just look.
Yeah.
I have a question. Step aside, step aside.
Noise.
Nope. Wait, you can bring it up for everybody.
Mr. McLeister.
Long time.
Is your eavesdropping side?
Oh no.
I should have brought a box.
You're getting shanked with nails. You're just delete all the bottoms and take the last one and just.
Yeah, yeah.
Salt, what a salt. This feels weird. This doesn't.
Did I make you check your blood pressure?
Yeah, right?
Maybe. Yeah, so I, that's why I was here. Why, how did we get her to church? Because it got me up. Christine.
Oh, that's 20.
Oh. Yeah, I feel like I should see this place.
Because I have a chair closer to you.
That's why I was like, yeah, it's salt. It all makes sense.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, but it's just like the perspective. I feel like I was over here. I think what we should do is we'll throw off in the middle tonight. Let's come up here and mute everything. Six inches of salt.
There, yeah. There's, you might, you might need to take it over your shoulder at some point.
Are you Mr. Osborne?
Oh, yeah. Every day is week. Every day is week.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
How you doing?
About how I.
Did you see my shoes?
They're awesome. Those are great.
That's actually kind of funny.
That's great.
I was in a wedding one time where we all wore Chuck Taylors.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is your new, uh.
Yeah, heck yeah, right?
That's great.
Why the heck not? That might have been, that might have been a Steve drawer. And everything else.
It looks like a camp, like on the bottom of like, uh, the.
Well, everything else, everything else was in Steve.
Oh, yes.
The salt now can.
There was a lot of.
Put it back where you found it.
Yeah, you never know when you're gonna need a snack in the middle of the council and, uh.
Pull out some, uh, salt and pepper. There you go.
Yeah, I mean, they did it before, not until salt.
That's. That could be part of the.
Yeah, I don't know if this is important or.
What is it? It might be.
Probably one of the.
Yeah, it's one of these deals.
Things that plugs the, where the.
There we go. I don't know if that's where it came from, but that's where it's going.
There's storage here.
You could like put a.
Well, hi, how are you?
Yeah, take a nap.
This has like a shelf. I had to look down.
Oh, I'm actually high. Oh, it's okay.
That's the, uh, next one.
The 19th of August. Yeah.
Thank you.
No, not like October. I'm sorry, I got my.
That should be cool.
That's good. Yeah, hopefully self will be able to. And that was the goal, is that the next one.
Start there.
Start there or at least it was.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
Yeah, he wants to.
Probably a rounds game.
Well, he's like, well, he wants.
Oh, yeah. And I know the interesting language.
So, yeah, he, yeah, we were talking about that.
For under city authority. There's nothing else.
Yeah.
So I'm running, so in the 29th Senate District, I'm, I'm running for Central Committee.
Shy away from any sort of electoral stuff.
Really?
Broke up from a fight. They were taking elections.
Okay. Well, yeah, he just asked, I didn't know what.
No, general under city authority would be. Take the city has power to control. You know, like if somebody has a problem with the animals in their neighborhood.
That's not a problem, I just wanted to make sure I was following the rules.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Lost.
No, these are winners.
But he is, he, uh, so he politician. Yeah, I don't know if Larry.
Yeah.
Larry. I've not, nobody. I was trying to see what he had. Decided if he was running at all or.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you would say, I would walk over to him.
Well, I, I've already collected my signature. Yeah, that's right. That's the max amount you're allowed to get.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. When another manager is speaking so. No, yeah. That was pretty long time. So then I went and Julia heard and, uh, after about 40 more minutes.
Yeah. When they were looking at. Again, the general 17 is. Yeah. I mean, you walk around your corner on. He's running there. And that's where he's. He had your guy.
Wow.
In fact, he's.
I'm glad they're. Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm kind of curious what, you know, I, I know a little bit about what we know some things are possible, so I was kind of, you know, curious.
Tuesday afternoon.
Most of the time. Interested to know what they were gonna do.
How you doing?
Almost recognize you without your shirt.
You recognize where the clothes on.
Normal street clothes, wearing a pajito.
Yeah, like, you gotta help me out, I need like name tags.
Right. Hey Greg, how are you doing? Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
Good.
Can't say no to that.
So it was great.
Been to see you, welcome back.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks a lot.
There's other things on the wall. How are you?
Good, nevermind.
How are you?
Yeah, Jerry has real things. Yeah, yeah. I just watch everything play out.
Really? You know what?
So many.
They were all wore. That's good. People start calling their own.
That's so funny.
I almost, I started, I started to call you Jack. Probably do, probably what you need me to do.
You're valuable?
I better grab a chair. I better grab a chair. Gotta be sold out here.
Only got a lot of work. I broke my. And I'm three weeks away from getting a mortgage.
Six in a row, right? So they're planning, they're giving themselves a chance.
Right.
They built themselves, they dug themselves a new hole.
I know.
Right now. We're not like that. We're too far out. Dangerous. Yeah, so he's going to. Should have to go.
There you go.
Well, I mean, there's better and there's better. We lost Atlanta's close support and they're still even with this poll. Six games out of seven.
Are they?
I mean, the Agnes really. Yeah, Charles.
What? No, there wasn't one of them.
No, there's, there's no.
Maybe they'll put it out there right before. The next month. It's so like.
They're not very. Well. The job.
That's what you're talking about.
I don't even know. Who's the kid that did his best Maddox impersonation?
Who's that?
Two hits. Yeah. Yeah, cause I know. Cause that's what I said, we're, we're. We're playing with the Band-Aid group.
But I hear like, right, that's.
Yeah.
They didn't even recognize the, um. She should at least tell me I got my claim. Yeah, so they're like little. He's like a. Six inch. It's not a material. It's like a.
And like some school. She come, you have really good.
They give you a six month.
He's pretty good.
It is called.
We've returned a few.
You can see it.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, I'm pulling my.
You were in charge of snacks, right? Okay. That's what I, that's what I was told. Yeah, we're gonna need some. Didn't bring enough for. Didn't bring enough for all. Oh, yeah, we get one turtle each.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, give him, give him three. Give him all.
You see what I was talking about?
You didn't bring popcorn after all?
You came in, you see how they got rid of that whole island?
Yeah, just.
Well, there's probably a room on the, depending on the mayor's stand there for a microphone.
Oh, no, you'll smell it once.
Bring it up for everybody.
I don't even know what they're talking about. What are you talking about?
Of course. Bring it up for everybody?
No, get your own. No. Here's the funny part.
I don't have a fire hydrant.
I thought it was a fire hydrant, but here's the funny.
We're just supposed to find the closest one to our house?
Something, that's what, what she said today in the.
Remember how the, uh, two interns are the ones painting them?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so literally like two days after our last class, I'm going around Winston Ave. There's those two guys painting them down the street from me and like, well, by the time I take my picture, it'll be all shiny and brand new looking. I haven't actually looked, it's in front of my neighbor's house and I texted her today and I said, if you see me taking a selfie in front of your hydrant, don't ask questions. Like, okay. But, yeah, and they just painted them, it was kind of funny, so.
They need to paint them like 1976, they painted it like. But we got a year.
It's 200. When they were talking about that the. White hats are North Canton and then what, uh, red and black hats are Canton. I didn't dream that, did I? They were talking about, because if you ever had a question on who's, who's fire hydrant was in.
Yes.
You're in the southern part of.
I do, like, I had to think about what you were saying, but yes.
When you're down by like Auburn Knolls, that neighborhood there, like, you're right up against Canton. So if you ever want to know who's fire hydrant.
Yeah, do you remember them saying that? Yeah.
And Canton has black caps. There are no electric fans on the square at Auburn Knolls.
Well, there was the guy, the guy that came.
They're at 50th and Cleveland.
Does that guy actually have one?
Yes.
He does.
I listened to it and I had to like listen to it like a same like.
My jaw. I'm surprised you guys didn't hear my.
Do we think he still has it set at night?
No, he was off turn it off.
No, because I asked, I asked chief and he said that he didn't charge him because he turned it off.
Oh, okay. Basically outed himself, right?
He turned it off, but, you know, he probably did.
Yeah, when I heard that, I was, I was shocked.
Excuse me, we hear. What rumor do you have about the electric fence? Where'd you get the rumor? Idiot, I put it up.
Don't worry about it.
Right for the horse.
That was pretty crazy.
I was surprised that the, uh, the video. You couldn't hear my jaw drop. So that, it doesn't pick up anything.
I had to rewind it for just a second time, so I was like, did he really just say he does that or?
Your, your, your loyalty, um. Your, your, your highness. Where's your trusty, uh, sidekick? Aren't they supposed to fan, fan you and put your feet up? Boy, he needs to update his freaking Facebook picture.
Does it feel more already?
Yeah, he doesn't like that.
And then. I hear you. Hi.
How you doing? Hello, mayor.
How are you?
How you doing?
Good.
I guess.
A browser.
Your soul. My soul. Back in the.
Hi, how you doing? I waited though for a couple of weeks.
Well, see, my problem is to convince me that there's lawn strikers, they're active, now I want to mow the grass, but I can't.
I thought maybe you could get that automatic, right? When you like turn it on at your home. What's he saying?
Yard in Pennsylvania is being made, he calls it Little Mow.
The other college kid next door. We can watch it mow as well.
Those are great.
But one's in the legal bedroom.
Yeah, the one that is. Has no ingress or what do we call it? There's nothing going on and there's supposed to be going on.
Should have a fire.
Um, well, we had a one inspection.
Probably a reason. Is he the one that's suing us?
No.
Idiot.
My time either. I mean, it's 48 hours. Life will feel normal again. I'll get my house back to myself. He should open a guided pool on Sunday just for the parents to go.
Really? Is it closed?
Yeah, it's not open during the week right now, it's only beginning.
Shoot, I should sign up. To say that.
They're all college kids, they go back to college.
There's live birds at the Y.
They're probably half college kids too.
The Y is running the school.
They have live birds in the. Court works.
Does it just go into like this little box over here that?
Whoever's running the thing should be trained, it's always need for them to run out there. What's her face? You said her name.
Wait, what? What's threatening?
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. You went over.
You took the over.
Took the over.
Even though it's. Don't it?
But she's not, but she heard it. Kind of goes outside and. Nope, nope. Further. So. I'm pretty sure you just had Bill's chair. I just took Bill's.
Journal home, I don't know.
I know.
Oh, come on, man.
All right. Two minute warning. Two minute warning. That's the agree. What did you just say? That's the bulldog gate there. What the heck? I should say, I think that you're. I read, I'll forget. I thought about it. Now you swore.
Some of my son went to West Virginia. We now, we now.
Yeah, of course you would. Heard they're competitive basketball. Heard they're top 25. I mean, they did, they did. That didn't go to the cross.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, if you could say that, that would be great. Are you ready?
Jeff, I think my season ticket's good for you.
Okay, I now call to order the committee of the whole meeting on August 18th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Liam, will you please call roll?
Number Wired.
Here.
Number Owens.
Here.
Number Cleister.
Here.
Number Warren.
Here.
Number Maitini.
Here.
Number Or.
Here.
Six present.
Okay. First financing and property, which is me. Gina, I'm gonna pass that to you, but I will say, uh, this is pretty standard where we're doing, uh, the, the transfers of monies. But I was so excited to see you were taking advantage of Tech Grant.
Yes.
That is huge, so we'll see an outage, but then that will come back in. And I've worked for other organizations and businesses and it's such a fabulous state program, so.
So there were four teams from City Hall that participated with Walsh's Tech Ed Grant Program. And we did a two hour a week times eight weeks. Excel, intermediate Excel and advanced, um, analytics, I believe. So they really, it was all over as far as starting out small and then really getting into the depths of functions and all the fun things that we love with Excel.
Right. So. Did they, have you taken in a test yet to know if everybody passed?
Um, that, I don't have that information, I passed. Jim, did you pass? Yes. I believe everybody passed as far as.
It was a hard test, I remember. Like, it was a challenging test. Well, I was so thrilled to see those dollars being spent here and the time I think it will save and just how much that people have, it's great.
And Walsh does receive the grant, so they will reimburse us. We pay it, but they will reimburse us, so it was, it was a great program. And they have lots of, um, different options, I'm sure we'll, we'll do another one another time, yeah. Um, so we're also doing another, a few other things as we sold the bonds, which I'll tell you more about at the end of next council meeting. Um, and so we need to do the appropriation for the bond proceeds for the fire station. So that's the majority of really what the appropriations are about. Other than that, we did have a payout for an employee who left, so we always appropriate that in that compensated absences fund. So that's like $2,500. And then we have additional revenue, which again is the bond proceeds and the Walsh Tech Grant, so pretty simple.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Can we have a motion to move item 3A to the council agenda?
Motion to move 3A to the council agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move that to the council agenda. Uh, the second term mine is 3B and this is, uh, talking about the CIC and purchase of property. Would you like to talk about that, Jason or Gina or?
Yeah, he is our CIC.
Right.
Absolutely, I would be delighted. Uh, this, uh, item 3B is authorizing the CIC to, uh, serve as the agent for the city of North Canton for the disposition of a two point acre, 2.8 acre property, uh, between Whipple Avenue and Wise. And, uh, it's a nice piece of property and, uh, we've got it advertised out on the CIC website and, uh, this would facilitate the sale.
No, that was a, the item we're trying to get rid of, so that's great, we're moving forward with that. Uh, a motion to move item 3B to the council agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move that to the item, uh, to the council agenda. Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Wired, please.
Yeah, so this is a grant from the state of Ohio that's been now designated for the price park. for the Price Park Fishing Gazebo. We're doing adaptive fishing projects there with new benches and landscaping. And essentially what we're doing is just, um, accepting the grant so we can spend the funds for that project. Anything to add on that?
Catherine?
No, this is a capital award, this capital award managed by the O D N R. It's three hundred thousand dollars, reimbursable.
Very cool.
The appropriation was included in the initial budget, so we don't need to add it.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions or concerns? All right, do we have a motion to move item four A to the council agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move it. Item four A to the council agenda. Street and Alley, John.
Okay, this is for, uh, West Maple. Uh, they're starting at the top of the hill, I believe, and run all the way down and they're part of that Jackson. Down there is just a little bit of Jackson, so giving the mayor that's right to negotiate with Jackson. One thing it did, I was concerned about reconstruction. Why did we use that as words?
I'm in.
Best place.
If you wish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I go.
After we're looking at, of course, it's budget time.
Right.
So we have a long budget meeting this morning, actually, putting together a capital program for next year. And one of the things we're looking at doing for twenty twenty-six is reconstructing West Maple from Lindy Lane to Wise and then taking it on to, to Whipple as a repave. The portion for next year would be a full-blown reconstruction. If you look real close to Curbin Gutter Shop, it's gone, worn out, the salt through the years. And you remember last winter with the freeze and dogs, the pavement just blew up and was in terrible shape. Probably indicative of a bad sub base, sort of gonna dig out everything that's there and then start from scratch with new, uh, three or four aggregate underneath and then the various three layers of asphalt to reconstruct all that. We'd be looking at about a one-point-two million dollar project. But being that West Maple is a, a, a functional, has a functional classification, functional classification, that we almost say it. And, and O D O's vernacular, uh, it's, it's gonna score well on grant applications. So we're looking to go for the forty-nine percent grant, fifty-one percent local through How Public Works. So the first part of this, of ordinance would be the mayor to, to actually apply for it and then if we get it, accept the grant money. The second part is, is you get a lot of extra points, it's so competitive for How Public Works if you have a dance partner, if you collaborate with another municipality. While the West little piece is part of our annexation, that we recently annexed, but the development agreement that we executed with Jackson is they still have to maintain that little bit of West Maple from Wise to Whipple. And with that, theirs isn't in as bad a shape, but their trustees have in front of them an exact agreement to execute where we would just repave that as part of the project, as the three-inch same as what we just did on Main Street. And that would give us much stronger grant application. And literally, their contribution, depending on the bid, would be like twenty-five to thirty grand for, for half. So it really helps us with the strong applications. That's kind of a two-part, uh, the ordinance just to apply for the funds and the other to enter into that agreement, the city package with Jackson, which is collaborate for that stronger application.
Okay, so it's from Lindy Lane.
Lindy Lane, yeah, I can talk at the end of the next meeting, is we do have a West Maple project that's ninety percent funded with SCATS, that's repaving, that we'll go open bids actually on the twenty-ninth of August from the square to Lindy Lane. And that'll just be a three-inch repave, because that's obviously not as bad.
But this work will not be done this year.
No, it would be a twenty, if, if we were successful with those E W C monies, it would be after July first of next year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any?
Any other questions?
Certainly appreciate the extra work to, uh, to make the grants a little stronger. I know there's a communication that goes on with Jacksonville Township and others, but it's certainly appreciated and the residents, thank you for looking out beyond just.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion, we put a five A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move back to the council agenda. And finally, utilities?
All right.
I'm gonna say utilities, is that okay?
That's totally fine.
Instead of promish? Is that okay?
Depends on who you ask, so. So keeping the grant theme, which I, I think it's always great to seek and hopefully receive money from other folks. This is taking a look at a waterline replacement project on Ninth Street Northeast. And this would be allowing the city to prepare and submit an application with O P W C to receive grant money, so, or hopefully receive grant money. And I'm sure Rob, you probably have some, uh, other details to spread out.
Not new. Really, remember, you pretty much nailed it. That's a waterline on Ninth Street Northeast called the Sack Out There. And the waterline actually goes west to an off-road east and ties in on Woodside. And as part of that, we're proposing to reconstruct the street. I don't know if you've ever been out in that area, because it's the worst street in the city by far, embarrassing to me. I mean, it's blown up, had numerous breaks. And then as part of the project, we'll reconstruct that northern block of Lepper, north of Seventh, to match what we had done a number of years ago. And that one's not gonna score as well, because obviously you're only affecting twenty, twenty-five houses, not as thorough a street. So to try and strengthen the grant application, in fact, that we can use a lot of pots from Curbin Gutter with storm sewer monies or pavement with the capital, uh, water money, obviously for the water line, we're just looking at twenty-four percent, that's, uh, it still helps, but it, you get more points for asking for less money. So that's sort of my angle there.
Yeah, we knew that, you get more points for asking for less money.
Yes.
Okay.
And then are they still matching dollars when you talked about all the different pots?
Y, yeah, this one would just be pretty much those three funds and then twenty-four percent, not that's the, kind of engineering, about a million-dollar projects, around forty grand.
Well, thank you for the work that you and your team are gonna put in on that. And with that, any other questions or comments, uh, from anybody here? Seeing none, I would, uh, make a move, or make a motion that we add item, uh, five A to the council agenda.
I think it's six A.
Oh, excuse me. Six A, you were exaggerating. I make a motion, we move item six A to the council agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item six A will move to the council agenda. Now adjourn the committee. Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I now adjourn. It'll take a couple minutes. We'll start the.
He's sitting down. Was, I don't know, really. I'll see. Maybe he is.
Just in the area, just going to harass him.
Yeah.
He's wanted to be searched, saw him researching. Put the, put the stuff in a special place, ready to get cut, cut down.
Think about what he said, but being his first chance to put him on.
I need those things.
I know.
I'm sure somebody out there, maybe Thomas, Eddie, Pop.
I now call to order the city council meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Gina, would you mind doing the opening prayer?
Absolutely, we can all rise. Now let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the ability to come together for this meeting, to do the business of our city. Please be here with us tonight and be with those not able to join us. Please watch over the city and this great country. In your name we pray, amen.
My pleasure. To you, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Then will you please call roll?
Number Wyre?
Here.
Number Owens?
Here.
Number Cleaster?
Here.
Number Warren?
Here.
Number Matheny?
Here.
Number Orr?
Here.
Six present.
Uh, motion of second to approve as presented the minutes from the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five committee of the whole and city council meetings. The July twenty twenty-five finance report and the twenty twenty-six alternative tax budget.
So moved.
Second?
Did you second?
Did you second, or are you asking?
No, I'm sorry. Is there a second, sorry about that.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Stay.
All right, we don't have anybody that is speaking for the legislation portion, so we will move to seven A. Liam, will you please read the title of resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty-five?
A resolution authorizing the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation as the agency of the city of North Canton for industrial, commercial, distribution and research development, facilitate the purchase and or disposition of property owned by the city of North Canton.
Okay, we just talked about this at the last meeting, and this is just part of the process, it's very routine to start moving, um, land. And this just sets that going. Any other questions or concerns? We have a motion to adopt the second reading of resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Onto new business, that was a short meeting. Um, onto new business, the election of the council vice president. So at this time, the floor is open to nominations for vice president of city council. For each nomination. Oh, of it, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm moving ahead.
There you go. I'll nominate Dave Matheny if he looks up.
I'll second.
Dave, do you, Dave Matheny, do you accept the nomination for vice president?
Yes.
Are there any additional nominations? Seeing none, the floor is closed to further nominations. The nomination for vice president of council is Dave Matheny. Liam, at this time, will you please conduct?
So it's, so there's only one, uh, so you just need a motion and a second to appoint.
Oh, sorry, sorry, okay. Uh, can we have a motion to appoint Dave Matheny to the position of vice president of council?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And now Liam, at this time, will you please conduct a ballot by like a little bit clapping well?
Uh, so you actually don't need to do.
We don't need to do it.
There's only one.
Okay, thank you.
We are good.
Good, we're good, okay. Liam, I appreciate all your steps here.
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh, at this time, the floor is open. Actually, I'm gonna defer to our, our, our legal entity and he's gonna, he's gonna talk a little bit about this procedure since we have not done it in a long time. So if you could kind of just outline the steps and the options and, and we're gone.
Thank you, council president. Um, I haven't called a legal entity in a while.
You can tell your firm members.
I will, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the name changed. So, um, we have a vacancy, uh, for a council appointment with the, uh, the mayor, um, taking over the position of mayor. Um, and so we're, tonight we're looking for nominations, um, and for council to potentially make an appointment. Um, if there are any nominations similar to how we just did for council president, those would be voted on. Um, a nomination would require a motion to nominate and a second. If there are, um, for whatever reason, no nominations, if they want, is, is up for forward, uh, there would be nothing to vote on and we would move on. Um, and then I, I would just make a note on the procedure generally, if that's okay. Um, so if council makes an appointment tonight or between now and I believe, um, thirty days from the date, which would be August twenty-fifth, uh, don't we do that?
The twenty-four.
Twenty-four, thank you. See, that's why I shouldn't have done that on the fly. But if council makes an appointment either tonight or at any meeting between now and that deadline, council makes that appointment. Once that thirty days passes, the appointment shifts to Mayor Stroya, and Mayor Stroya would make that appointment, if no appointment has been made, um, at that point. So that's kind of the process, so if there are, at this point, I would turn it over to you if you want to accept any nominations for that position.
Okay. All right. At this time, the floor is open to nominations to serve as the at-large council member for the unexpired term of Matthew Stroya, ending November thirty, twenty twenty-five. Nominees must be at least eighteen years old and be a resident of the city. Are there nominations? Seeing no nominations?
You would, um, you would close nominations now?
Okay.
And then if council has another meeting between now and the twenty-fourth, it must consider nominations at the time. They may, but if not, uh, we would just move on to the next step of business.
Okay. Um, I would move that we close nominations.
On a second.
All approved?
All in favor?
All, all in favor, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we will move on to the next line of business.
Page five. Eight C.
Eight C, up to five, got it, yep.
Aye.
Okay. Um, a motion and second to suspend council rule twenty-three to allow consideration of additional items that were discussed at the immediately preceding committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures and related one-time permanent transfers of monies made to various funds for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
All right, if there are no other questions, I motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
So moved. To suspend?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then a motion to adopt ordinance forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ordinance forty-seven dash twenty twenty-five, it's passed. Liam, will you please read the title of resolution forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five?
A resolution authorizing the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation as the agency of the city of North Canton for industrial, commercial, distribution and research development, facilitate the purchase and or disposition of property owned by the city of North Canton and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Okay. Uh, we're just following the process to move, uh, the purchase of a building. I motion to adopt the first reading of resolution forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then lastly, a motion to adopt resolution forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution forty-eight twenty twenty-five.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, lean on. Liam, will you please read the title of ordinance forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a capital improvement community park recreation slash conservation project pass-through agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Natural Resources to provide the city with a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for North Canton Price Park recreation and accessibility improvements and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Number Wyre?
Yeah, so this is what we just spoke about, about ten minutes ago in committee. Um, anyone have any questions? Okay, then I will move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance forty-nine twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. A motion to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings. So moved?
Second.
Sorry. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, uh, I motion to adopt ordinance forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five under suspension of the rules, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, pass, thank you. Okay, ordinance number five zero dash twenty twenty-five, first reading, street and alley. All right, Liam, will you please read the title of ordinance fifty dash twenty twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an agreement by and between the city of North Canton and the Jackson Township Board of Trustees for the reconstruction of West Maple Street. the reconstruction of West Maple Street and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Orr.
Okay. We discussed this in committee of the whole. Rob, you did a great job explaining. Is there any other questions?
So I make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance.
Fifty dash twenty twenty-five. Second? I move, make a motion to suspend the rules of council requiring, sorry, no, no, go back. So I seconded. All in favor of adopting the first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. A motion and second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And lastly, a motion and second to adopt ordinance fifty dash twenty twenty-five under suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's see. Liam, will you please read the title of ordinance fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of North Canton to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a grant for the Ninth Street Northeast Waterline Replacement Project, and if awarded, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the receipt of said grant and declaring the same to be an emergency.
Mr. Webber.
We just spoke about this a couple moments ago. Rob, I think it's, I feel it's safe to say that nothing has changed since we talked about it.
Don't mention anything else going on.
We haven't gotten to the grant yet. Okay, I'm just kidding. Okay. Given that, I digress. Given that, I would move that we adopt fifty-one twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? A motion and second to suspend the rule of council requiring three readings.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, and then lastly, a motion and a second to adopt ordinance fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five under suspension of the rules.
Motion to adopt ordinance fifty-one twenty twenty-five under suspension.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Love these grants. So that ends our meeting. We're going to announce another recognition of the public portion. At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address city council, we have two, will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from officials at the dais. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from their premises. So, Mr. Patterson, if you wouldn't mind speaking first?
My dad's here.
I don't like, I don't know you like Mr. Stroy. I have to be born with him.
We're all friends here, right? Hi, everybody. Pat Patterson, seventeen fifty-four Street, Cogle Falls. What did I do on my summer vacation? Well, first of all, I went to a city council meeting on the fourteenth of July, and everybody was in different seats. Now I'm just confused. I don't know what to think. But seriously, all kidding aside, congratulations to everybody that's new roles. Mayor Stroya, of course, got my full undying support as we move forward as a city. Many of you know that I do conduct a periodic community walk. And the latest walk was yesterday. Members were down. We got to go to Mr. Orr's ward. We spent time, we walked the path over here, went up Maple Street, down Donner into Tortoise World, went back, did a loop back in the Deerfield area. And, you know, low turnout, kind of a sticky, humid day. Other people had things going on, you know, Main Street Festival was the night before. We were all tired. I worked all day the day before, ended up at the festival hall. So we were all tired. And so, you know, I'm grateful for those that showed up. But we're going to have the next one on the nineteenth of October. We're going to be either at West Park or at Doug Wechter's. So one or the other. Yeah, I've got to talk to Doug. They want to come in and be at it until I talk to them. But we're going to be, you know, I mean, they're right across the street from each other. So with that, I'm prepared to be grilled.
You're good.
Crickets.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, everybody.
Brad Davis.
Brad Davis, sixteen seventy-eight, Middle Lane Drive, southeast, North Canton, Ohio. I have in my hand a commercial plumbing permit for Ellsworth Plumbing. Seventeen hundred and fifty-five dollars and twelve cents for a plumbing permit for a body shop. North Canton, a new plumbing permit. It's a hundred bucks plus ten cents a square foot. So do we use square feet to put in plumbing? This guy, he's going to have a building plan review for the plumbing permit. Two hundred bucks plus three cents a square foot. Zoning review, fifty dollars plus five cents a square foot. Now we banged Ellsworth fifteen cents a square foot so far. It's got to have a backflow device. It's a commercial operation. There's another hundred bucks. So the same fee at Stark, or the same permit fee at Stark County is four hundred and thirty-five dollars. I think we have a little problem here. The way it looks to me, if a person wants to build a warehouse with one small bathroom included, it's going to cost as much for the plumbing permit as someone with a commercial kitchen or multiple bathrooms. The term variable fee is on the fee list. Not consistent. There are approximately forty different fees for permits, and out of that forty, there's twenty-four have a variable fee. For instance, electrical altercations or replacements. The permit costs a hundred bucks and ten cents a square foot. Where are we going with this square foot thing? We just trying to get into somebody's pocket? Let's say we're building a house and you get charged twenty cents per square foot for the plan review at a hundred bucks. Then you get charged again for the permit, a hundred bucks at fifteen cents a square foot. If your house is three thousand square feet, you're in a thousand bucks in variable fees before you ever start, plus the permit, two hundred bucks. I realize that council readjusts the fees for permits last year. I guess I didn't pay close enough attention. I believe the current fee structure may be burdensome for some businessmen looking to invest in our community and may deter potential development. I urge the city council to reconsider the fee structure for plumbing permits and ensure that it's fair and reasonable. I don't know how long ago we got rid of Safe Belt, but it's still mentioned in the plumbing permit. So thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thanks, Brad.
Any questions for Brad?
I'm either getting shorter.
List, I think we can take a motion, right? Is he on the list?
He's not on the list. So what do we need to do, Liam?
Oh, you can just let him speak.
Yeah, the reason, I came in, I was talking to Kathy.
Oh, that's okay.
And I got in here just a minute late.
I follow procedure.
Well, being the new president, Stephanie.
Right, I have to. Right, I need to, right?
It's all being recorded, the same. My name is Dominic Fontaine. I live at nine sixty-five Fair Oaks Avenue, southwest North Canton, Ohio. Former council member, so when I was sitting here, I was saying, aye, aye, you know, like every time you guys pass something. So, but what's interesting is, you know, things are evolving. And what Brad said is true, you know, it's just on this side of it, not on that side of it. It's always a concern to be sensitive to the bottom line, use common sense. But really, what I want to talk about today is this guy right here. So this is Mark Inzetta. He's about my size, so this might be a little too tall. But he's an attorney that, for the vacancy. He called me, we were talking about it, and I said, I got appointed. So when you said it was a long time from the appointment, I was the last person.
Yeah.
Appointed, which would have been in two thousand and fourteen. And I remember a lot of these people here, Chuck and Martin and the press, were, had a good day with me, if I recall. So I said to Mark, I go, Mark, do you really want to do this? Well, he's semi-retired, and when I was in council, I remember he called me as a constituent because he had a business in the community. And he was saying, you know what, Tom? He goes, these permits and all these things. So we were talking through this as we were trying to work through things, you know, like all the little troubles with the concrete and the things we used to do, where we needed more cohesion on our program instead of helter-skelter because there was a lot of changes over the last twenty, twenty, twenty-five years. So what I liked about Mark is I got to know him as a friend, as a business person. And I thought, you know what, for an attorney, this dude has common sense. So there's always the legal side of things, but there's the practical side. What I like about an attorney, that legal's important to make sure we're doing things by the book, but more importantly, is common sense and practicality, right? So to me, that's really what you look for in a person. Someone that's in the trenches, that knows how to run a business, and that can relate to people, and that's not a fool, right? So I just wanted to say, if anybody were to ask, I would give Mark an opportunity because he's a city guy. He's been around a while. He's an attorney, so he's smart, but he's also down to earth. And when I worked with him as a council member, you know, you always worry a little bit with the attorneys because they're a little bit sharp because they know all the rules. And I didn't have my magic wand at the time to make it go away. And he was reasonable, and I appreciated that. So we became friends over time. So when the spot came open, you know, we talked about it a little bit. I thought he would be a good grounded person, much like what I think I was when I was on the team for a while. You know, good practical, common sense. So that's what I'd like to say. So thank you for your time.
I got a question, Dominic.
Yes, Mr. Orr.
It's not, the house down the street from you on Corviglia, how are they making progress? I drove by it last week.
The one that got hit by the tree?
Where the tree fell down.
Did anybody see that? It was on national news. It was pretty scary. Luckily, no one got hurt. But I saw that they were putting the framing up on the main part of the house. My hunch is, is the garage, they're going to probably demo because it's in bad shape. But I just want to say thank you, and it's refreshing to come and see all your happy faces. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Okay. Onto department reports. So let's start with, you want to say it, Mr. Stroy? Or just put it in? Oh, you want to be cut from the un. Right. So let's start with the Director of Administration.
I think it's your first.
I'm switching it up. I'm not having you. The Director of Administration.
Thank you, Madam President. First time I got to say that. So as you know, our Deputy Director of Administration, Ben Young, moved on to the City of Chardon. Heard from him today. He's doing well. His first week was great. So, you know, we launched a search to replace his position and find another backfill into the Deputy Director of Administration position. And we have selected a candidate. I'll tell you that the candidate brings with him decades-long experience in public employment in the fields of urban planning, community development. Before this, worked for a city that was significantly larger than us. Worked, that was the City of Akron, where they worked in the cabinet of former Akron Mayor Dan Horgan as the Director of Planning and Urban Development. Also served as the Executive Director of the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation Study, AMATS, which is similar to Stark County's SCATS, which is where he started originally. So he did start in Stark County and went up to Summit County and now has come full circle. And that person I'm speaking of, if you don't know already, is Jason Sady. So congratulations to Jason. He has business at City for a year now, and he's done a great team, a great job on our administration team. He worked closely with Ben. Ben gave you a seal of approval. That is what he called for. He heard about it today. I announced it to the organization, and he said, two thumbs up. Jason's going to do a great job filling his shoes. And so we're looking forward to him being part of the team. He has been, you know, a great asset to our team with the years, the decades. I won't say how many decades to make you sound young, but a lot of decades. Just all of the connections that he has when you work in public service, as long as he has a lot of great connections. And so, just an asset to our team, and we're glad to have you on it. If you want to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you. And it is almost three decades, so I'm not ashamed to say. I think I've still got a couple of good years left in me, though. This is a great community. I've really enjoyed getting to know both the community itself and the public, and many of the people in this room. I've had the honor to work with just over the relatively short time. I've been in North Canton. I've really become fond of North Canton and all of you, and I'm really honored to serve North Canton and its people. I, a little bit about me, just from kind of a philosophical standpoint, I'm a big believer that the best process can always be better. So I really appreciate the public comments on things like our permits or just any other comments that we receive. I wanted you to know that I'll always take all those things to heart. I really appreciate the confidence that Catherine and the rest of the team has put in me, and I really look forward to serving you in my new role. And my door is always open, my phone's always ready to be answered. So if you have thoughts on things that I can help with or help to improve or take a look at with all of my colleagues here, I'd be delighted to do that. So thank you.
He's effective in the position today. That's why you see him.
Liam was not supposed to put it out. Dave, our presentation got thrown. We're going to say it now. Give me slides for David.
I think I went under the radar, so.
There were astute people amongst us that didn't notice.
Other than that, you know, many of you came out to the Main Street Festival on Saturday. It was great attendance. We launched our first, you know, parks and recreation, and I'll let Christina tell you a little bit more about the master plan, the community engagement. But it was a great, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for all that they did and the volunteers. It takes a lot of people to do something like that, and it's a community tradition of many, many years. We saw many of you there, and it was a great day. So that's all I have.
Director Finance.
Thanks. I have a couple items. I wanted to let the public know and the council know as well. The Finance Department, AKA Jim, received the budget award from GFOA again. It's a very distinguished award. It has national criteria. I don't have the final numbers for the twenty-five budget, but in twenty-four, just to give you a sense, there were three hundred and seventy-eight overall nationwide entities that received the award. Only twenty-two were in Ohio. So it's just interesting, and it's, it really is an honor to receive, and there's a lot of work, right, Jim? It's a lot of work that goes into it. So, and the criteria just revolves around, because this is how we build our budget document. It is a policy document. It looks for transparency, a financial plan, and it's a community tool. So we want to keep those things active, and that's why we update the budget as often as we can or need to throughout the year. It's a living document. So that was one item. Secondly, on August sixth, we had a rating review call with S and P Global, and this was ahead of selling our fire station bonds. If you recall, last December, S and P, I want to say downgraded, but it just added a minus sign to our double A rating, and that hurt a little, and we didn't understand why. And in our post-call interview, they just explained that their criteria had changed. Remember, it wasn't really anything the city had done. The criteria had changed whether you had Moody's or S and P do the rating. And so we dropped from AA to AA minus with a stable outlook. That was December. So in August sixth, we had a second call with S and P, and it's pretty intensive. We prepare lots of information and documentation and really try to present the city for the positive outlook and its growth. And so I'm happy to report, they have revised the outlook from stable to positive. They maintain the double A minus rating, but normally, I mean, that's pretty normal. They don't usually change it within three or four years. But they also added a few notes, so I wanted just to share those with you. The outlook revision reflects their strengthening view of the district's finances due to a few things. Number one, voter approval of the income tax rate increase. The second was the reserve growth. Remember, we were depleting some of our growths for the land bank projects, but now we're starting to sell those off, and we're starting to see that money come back. Policies and practices, we put quite a few in place. The CIP was a huge one for them. And our debt policy, that if you recall, you also approved in the first half of two thousand twenty-five. So kudos to everyone. All that teamwork came together, and it strengthens the city rating. So that was on August sixth, and then we sold the bonds on the market, which was so fun. You get to watch it. You know, we weren't, we didn't get to be on the floor like we used to long, long, long time. used to a long, long, long time ago, but we got to watch it on the screen and you could see who's buying what. So just to give you a small recap, the architects gave us a revised, um, budget for the project and that revised budget was fourteen million, seven hundred fifty-ish thousand dollars. So I know the council authorization was, the ordinance was up to sixteen million, but we felt like we're not gonna sell sixteen million, have to pay sixteen million back if we don't need sixteen million. So we capped it at fifteen million. That gives us a little bit of room. They explained, um, right now they just can't account for what the tariffs will be. So we left a little bit of room in there for that. If there is money left over, it just pays off the bonds or starts paying the debt payment. So we went to the market with fifteen million. They all sold, um, except for seventy thousand dollars was the last. And it, and it's actually, that's because the way it was structured, it's the short-term piece. Nobody wanted a one-year, short-term piece that's gonna get paid next year with very little interest. Lots of interest on the long-term. I think we had three and a half times the, um, buys than what we had available. So there was a lot of interest in municipal market at that day and that wasn't the case the week before that, so we were kind of holding our breath, but it worked out really well. And an interesting piece of that, nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars was purchased by local retail investors, which is you and me and people in our community. So that's our update on the bonds. We'll receive the money actually on August 28th.
How many of you were watching?
Uh, my office was full. We had it up on the big screen, so yeah, we had quite a few in there.
Interesting process and the small ones went first.
What happens to the seventy thousand?
Uh, so Stiefel, our underwriter, they'll buy. They bought them, yeah.
And that, it would, would, what would have happened if it was a million?
So they actually, it wasn't them, it was, um, maybe Key was the, Key Bank was the underwriter on a different municipal project that we were talking about right before this one. They ended up buying half just the week prior. So we were a little, it was about a twelve million dollar project. So that's, it just depends on the market that day, but we sold all but seventy thousand. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd. Congratulations to your team and Gina. Please relay to everybody. That's, that's fabulous. Okay. Uh, Council Clerk.
Um, my one big update is, uh, over the summer, we did the 2025 Community Survey. Uh, it officially ended with Main Street Festival. Uh, it's kind of everybody's last chance to give us, uh, their thoughts. Um, I will say I'm a little disappointed in the turnout this year, uh, but I will be working on the report, getting everything tabulated. Uh, I'll get that to you guys hopefully in September. Uh, I'm used to having interns that help me do the tabulation, uh, which leads me to the second part, uh, is kind of a shameless plug of our internship program. Uh, so we do have a lot of different opportunities running. Uh, it used to just be the Policy Office, working with me and Admin, uh, but we have expanded to things like Human Resources and the Public Safety Department, Finance, uh, Public Works, uh, even things like the Water Treatment Plant, uh, that'll be real popular with like chemistry kids. Uh, but then also working with me and the City Administration. Um, I will say that I have not had anybody apply to work with me in the fall and I do love having them. Uh, they're great assets to me and it's a great learning experience. Uh, a lot of hands-on experience in these opportunities, uh, a lot of opportunities to meet different people that you likely wouldn't. Uh, a lot of my interns have met a lot of people at the county, uh, and from other, you know, municipalities as we work together, uh, and that helps lead them to different opportunities in the future. Uh, so just kind of letting everybody know that that's on our website, uh, open to college kids, uh, preferably juniors and seniors, but we'll take anybody. So yeah, just apply and come join our team.
Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing with that.
Absolutely.
All right. Now, Mayor Stoya.
Oh, great. Already?
I'd had to wait. I, I wasn't there on your Surinai Day, I would have been out of town.
Oh, that's okay.
And so I've been waiting to say it publicly and I just, I couldn't be more thrilled, um, to have you as our mayor now and I've worked with you over the years, uh, so easily and collaborative and communication and I know you'll do a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. It's an honor to call you that. Um, I don't have a lot to say. I just, uh, I, I have a lot of pride in our community and I'm gonna show you my, my shoes. I'm probably the first mayor to apparently take my shoes off and show you them, but, uh, that's how much I love this community. That's why I have my suit. So, um, I love this place. I'm really looking forward to, to serving and, uh, getting into the role. Um, so the first event that I was a part of, uh, that I attended was the Main Street Festival and wow, it was incredible. I mean, I've never seen that many vendors, that many food trucks. Um, it was absolutely stunning. I mean, incredible. So, um, we're off to a good start there. I wanted to thank all the applicants for the vacant, uh, position for the at-large. Um, that, oh yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, that's, uh, yeah. Oh, you know what? I'll let Matheny.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't wanna, I don't wanna sell Dave Thunder for that. Um, but, uh, that's, I think it's a really good sign that we had eight applicants to, to apply for an open position. Um, so, uh, I was excited about that and, uh, congrats to Jason as well. Look forward to working with you. And, uh, thank you to Pat, Brad and Dom for speaking. And I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Council reports. So we will start with Board One, with Mr. McLeister.
All right. Thank you so very much. Um, yes, I'm gonna dovetail into kind of what you said. What a fantastic weekend, what a fantastic Saturday it was. And just like you said, and actually the conversation I had with our new Deputy Director of Administration, I mean, it was a pretty robust Main Street Festival. I think we all can agree. I mean, sometimes they go up and down, but, and this was just probably the largest one I can remember and certainly one of the most well-attended with, uh, I mean, just, there are people everywhere and the weather, who could complain about the weather? It was fantastic. I mean, so I wanted to send a big, uh, thank you to, uh, folks at the Chamber and of course Seven Twenty Market and, uh, all other community partners who were involved with it, so. Also want to, uh, thank Rob. I think, uh, Rob, I think we were on break when I was able to drag you to a residence house and you came out and helped me with a couple of things, so I definitely wanted to acknowledge that and thank you since, since you're here this evening. So thank you so very much. Again, congratulations to Jason. And then lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge all the folks who applied. Uh, there are a number of you here, so, you know, just, you know, Jeff, Jeff, um, Callie, Greg's in the back, um, Mark's in the back.
Holly, Jeff.
Holly, and, uh, I think it's, yeah, both of you. I think I got everybody. I want to thank you to echo what, uh, Mayor Stoya said, so it's great to have eight applicants. Um, I hope you all stay involved. Um, if I can ever be of any assistance, answer any questions, I certainly hope that you give me a call and, uh, you know, ask to collaborate in the future. So thank you all for applying and thank you for being here this evening. And that's it. Any other?
Thank you. Board Two, Member Matheny.
I think we have a special shout-out that needs to be mentioned. Officer Todd Schaper was awarded the 2024 North Canton Police Officer of the Year Award. So congratulations to Officer Schaper. The only other thing I would like to say is, uh, a thank you for the nomination to be Vice President and the votes and the confidence for me to fill that position.
Award Three, Member Owens.
Thanks, Steph. I would just like to echo what Jamie said, Rob and, and everyone else. At the beginning, we were talking, it's nice to see so many folks from the administration and all those here. So it's really nice, especially, I know that's why you're here, but when we have these projects that come up, the amount of color that you're able to add and, uh, sharing the story of how you are working really hard to go and bring those dollars back to the community. It's really nice when you come and we get a chance to hear it directly from you. So we appreciate you sending your day to the evening with us in that way. Um, and I'd also like to thank, um, the candidates who applied for the open position for coming and, and to our President Stephanie for allowing me to lead those interviews with our group. Um, so just thank you to, to everybody.
All right. Uh, Word Four, Member Orr.
Okay. Um, I want to thank our city services that have been busy in the fourth ward. Um, we got the guy out of the bucket, he was stuck up in the bucket too. Entire department had to come out and get him. The skunks that were down in the, uh, the gutters. I did Main Street, uh, the repaving of Main Street looks good so far. I can't wait till they get to the southern part from the border up to Knoll or up that way. That is much needed, but, uh, Main Street, I think we were all on that on Saturday. It gets hot pretty fast. I want to thank all the eight of you that showed up, uh, for vacancy. Thank you for coming back. Good luck. Um, Jason, congratulations. You did great. Um, we, uh, I've heard from a couple people in the ward and, uh, I've picked a couple of snap bottoms, but other than that, that's my report.
Thank you. All right. At Large, Member Wierke.
All right. Um, I'd just like to say congratulations to our first female president of council. Um, I think that's, you know, a really important moment for us and excited to work under your leadership and also, um, Vice President Matheney's. Um, Matt, I know we've all congratulated you already, but I really, um, I don't know, it's nice seeing you over there. I, I know that we're going to work really well together, so I'm just looking forward to what we can do. And I'll continue congratulations with Jason Segidi. We've had a chance to work on some projects together, so I'm really excited. Um, it's always clear when I'm in a meeting with you how smart you are and the experience that you have. Um, so, uh, yeah, you're gonna be a great, um, replacement in that role. And then continuing to congrats, the Chamber of Commerce, Erica and Santana just knocked it out of the park for the chamber this year. It's, yeah, I've been with that, on that committee for many, many years and I feel like it's, it's been great in the past, but this year they just, it was phenomenal. So I'm really proud of them and grateful. And then Catherine alluded to the fact that we did have, um, the first community engagement session for our Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Master Plan. Y'all may remember, we finally got that funded and moving forward, I don't know, a month ago or so. So that's awesome that that's moving forward. We had almost three hundred responses. It was really great. I don't know if y'all saw at Main Street Festival, but, um, people who visited that booth were given kind of, you know, funny money, monopoly money, whatever you want to call it, and they got to vote with their dollars in what they would like to see, um, done for our parks and recreation, what they support, where they would invest their tax dollars. So that was really neat to see. Um, I'm excited to hear how that all gets tabulated when we're done, but there will be several additional community engagement sessions coming up, so stay tuned for those. And there is currently, um, a survey available. Where is that, Catherine? Is it on our website?
Yes, we'll, we'll be pushing it out on social media and there also, there'll be some surveys, a random sample will be mailed. And then, um, I brought these little business cards. I'll give them to you also.
Okay, good, good.
We were handing these out. It has a little QR code on there and then you can take the survey that way too. So I'll give you some of those too. Handout?
Yeah. So that's, that's great. Super excited to have that moving forward. And then I would just echo everyone else up here, thank you to all of you who applied. Um, it was really great to learn about so many people in our community. Um, I plan to reach out to all of you because I think there are lots of ways y'all can get engaged and I'm looking forward to kind of trying to help make that happen. And that's all.
All right. Thank you, Member Wierke. Uh, Matt, you're right. Whenever we get to the end, there just isn't a lot to say because everyone says the same. But I will, I have a few thank-yous, um, along with that and appreciation. And first, thank you to the finance team. Uh, it has been the easiest role to be the finance chairperson in this and that isn't always the case. That does not happen in every city and, and, and like our, our director said, to receive that award or have, you know, an A minus or a minus or a positive status or favorable, it, it, it all matters. And I thank you for the work that you and Jim do and, and keeping your team. You are not a group that we have to keep finding spots for, really kind of the whole city actually. Um, so I appreciate that and, uh, you have made it so easy to, to work with and, and be a part of, so thank you, thank you for that. Um, Matt, just thank you for letting me still call and ask questions and, uh, I thought you always did a very nice job in this role and we worked well together and I hope to do the same with, uh, Member Matheny and, uh, I, I look for your guidance and suggestions and we'll always take feedback. Uh, I'll get it down. You know, there were some little missteps and I'll keep following Liam's, uh...
I've made mistakes every meeting.
Like, you did tell me that. You're like, every single meeting, I did something, I goofed up something. Uh, so I, I will continue to work on that. And in that note, Liam, thank you for being a really great, uh, Council Clerk these past few weeks. You kind of came under a challenging time with Ben leaving and, um, and then the mayor resigning, uh, you know, as much a surprise to anybody as well. And so nobody anticipated any of this. And so for you to learn on the job and take suggestions and guidance from all of us, from all of them, it has been so much appreciated and you're very easy to work with and, um, I look forward to that. And as we discussed, I think it will be nice to, to not, I think a number of us still relied on, on Ben, as we said. We had been used to calling him for many years. And so Liam would kind of get the second call and, and maybe that wasn't as nice of a call. And so I think it will be very nice to have that streamlined and, and hopefully more efficient. Uh, Rob, I always love having you here, you know, and it's, it's, uh, it's not because I want you to stay late for work. It's just, there's always so much good coming and it's no chance that those grants just happen to come to, to our community either. You have to apply for those. You have to know how to do that. You have to write it with expertise and perfection and you do that. And it's so important. Um, I live off of East Hill and you made that almost a seamless. Like, I can't believe I didn't get any calls about that or Monticello, you know, my neighborhood wasn't blowing up without the way that was done. And the, the crew were, were, um, just always working and it was timely, so thank you for, for all of that. Those awards are not awarded to everybody and if you drive around the state, you know, you see that very easily. Um, thank you again to the candidates. I know from working with leadership of Stark County for the past seventeen years and interviewing people three times a year, it's not easy as adults to walk into a room and have seven people staring at you and wonder what the questions are. You weren't given the questions. Everybody was given the same questions, so, so we were hoping that it was gonna be a seamless process as well as that. But it's not easy. And so for you to stand up there and have given us our resumes and, um, to just put your name out there and to know only one is gonna be chosen, um, is not easy. So thank you, thank you for doing that. As adults, you know, we always tell our kids in elementary and high school, "And run for this, or run for this, or try out for this." And yet as adults, we're very apprehensive to do that. So thank you for putting your name out, truly. And, um, three of the applicants were on the ballot and so, um, we'll continue to see, um, their names. And I think that's it. So just be patient. Sometimes my words get switched and, uh, I forget, uh, people's names, but, uh, I'm here to work for you and with you and I will continue to take guidance from all those before me, so. I think that's it. A final call for new business? Okay. A motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussion with an attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body that are the subject of pending court action, as permitted by the ORC 121 dash two-two.
Second.
We actually do a roll call vote.